And mixed-use development, we needed to modify that to strike the one of which must be residential to match what the comp plan said. The comp plan does not require one of those uses to be residential. So, we need to clean that up. So, this is one of those housekeeping items that needed to be done.
Okay.
Um, the problematic uses. This came-
Let me swing back for a second.
Yes, sir.
So, in the comp plan, when you go through the planned corridor developments and the like, they all require a residential component.
Yeah, that's incorrect.
Except for Chinatown.
Right.
Are they used to?
They, that's actually incorrect. That shouldn't have read like that.
I'm sorry?
It should not have read like that because the comp plan doesn't require it. And eventually-
The comp plan requires in the PCDs, one of the uses be residential.
No. What it says is it encourages mixed use.
No. If you read each of the uses in the comp plan-
Yes, sir.
Don't we change it?
Mm-hmm.
I thought we changed it maybe.
Uh, we actually are trying to get this all cleaned up where it matches.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so in the planned corridor development, it says the land use is mixed use. Doesn't say it has to be residential. It just says mixed use.
I'll send you all that tomorrow.
Right.
I, I got it. It's on my desk, but I didn't bring the copies with me.
Of course, sir. So, each of those, it says the land use must be mixed use. Um, when we go to look at what mixed use is about, it just says three or more uses. Um, it talks about how if you're going to be on a ground floor, you have to have retail and you have to have this and that and the other, and then you have to have at least two stories and one of, and something above that. So, to be real mixed use. So, we're trying to clean this whole mixed use up. So, again, this is a housekeeping item. All right. So, let's go to problematic uses. We had to delete tattoo parlors and body piercing um, because that, those are actually protected under the First Amendment, so we can't really call them problematic uses. So, so we had to clean that up.
Is it protected all the way to the point of saying, how do you, how, how can overproliferation take place without infringing upon someone's right?
It, it doesn't mean that they can't be regulated.
Right.
But you cannot prohibit them except in certain circumstances.
So, we could say that it's allowable, but you can't have it within five feet of another-
Distance separation is permitted.
Separational.
Right. I mean-
It's like an adult entertainment use, which has-
And so, right now, we have, um, we're not, we, we just wanted to make sure that we're not identifying these as a problematic use to infringe upon somebody's First Amendment rights. So, it's a housekeeping.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, recovery residences, which are governed by the state of Florida, and we have to allow them uh, in residential districts. We did not have a definition for those. There's two kinds. There's just the recovery residence, and then there's special kind of voluntarily certified recovery residences. So, we wanted to make sure that those were defined. Um, we looked at some, to try to clean up that school special technical to, because remember, we had the educational facilities, special technical. Uh, we wanted to kind of clean up some of that unnecessary language because we thought it was kind of redundant. Um, so it's a, a housekeeping item. Secondhand store, we did not have a definition for that, and we have a provision on secondhand stores. There's a, there's separation. I believe they're under the separation requirements. Um, so we wanted to make sure that that was clearly defined. Sign shopping center, um, we thought that was just another redundancy for housekeeping purposes because shopping centers have monument signs, and we govern monument signs. Um, and so, we don't have a special shopping center sign category for, um, uh, any of that. You know, height or any of that. So, it's all governed under the monument. Uh, vehicle services, again, this was a duplicate. If you look at how vehicle service minor is defined, it's the exact same definition. So, we, we have a vehicle service minor, a vehicle service major, and then we had a vehicle service that had the same definition as a vehicle service minor. So, we thought we'd just clean that up. It's a housekeeping item. And last but not least, uh, we needed to define a winery. We, we, it's an allowable use, but we don't have a definition.
We have several wineries, or winos.
Well, uh, winos, yes. I have a definition of that, yes. So, with that, sir, um, that is the end of my presentation. I'll just let you know that the next steps would be the two readings before city council. As I noted earlier, that the first reading is scheduled for, at the 11:13 city council meeting, and the second and final reading is proposed for the January 8th, 2019 city council meeting. Again, these dates are always tentative. Um, we're scheduling it for that, but ultimately, the administration makes the final determination of what appears. But we generally try to stick with that schedule.
All right. Well, if, if that includes staff report-
That does, sir.
Oh.
You have another item, Mike?
No, Bob, did you?
I have an inclusion that I'm trying to-
Yeah.
-stick in here.
Yeah.
And, uh-
You have this handout?
Yes. Everybody's been given this highly redacted document. And, and the reason it's, it's so scratched out is, I'll tell you in a moment. The definition for commercial vehicles, um, there's, there's a lot of, there's some discussion going on about parking, what's allowable parking in residential neighborhoods and the like, and we've talked about some of that. And the current definition of a, what I'm trying to do is keep, keep us from having a definition of something that's unenforceable. Currently, our definition of a commercial vehicle is commercial vehicle, this is, this is what's on the books today. Commercial vehicle means any vehicle, including but not limited to trucks, trailers, subby trailers, tractors, and motorhomes utilized in connection with the operation of a commerce, trade, or business, and not utilized as a dwelling. So, if you do some restriction on commercial vehicles of where they can park and when they can be, you can't look at the vehicle and go, "That's a commercial vehicle." Somebody's got to go, "Excuse me, what do you do with that?" So, anybody that's a Realtor that drives around in their Mercedes and takes customers with them, that's a commercial vehicle. My neighbor who's got a pickup truck that he uses to take his stuff to work with him, that's a commercial vehicle. And I don't know that that's our intention. Um, so, the definition of commercial vehicles that I've given everybody was contained in an ordinance that was unanimously passed by the planning commission on April 7th, 2015. And it was discussing parking in residential neighborhood. That's why it came up. They didn't, people didn't want commercial vehicles parked overnight. They didn't want the tow truck parked overnight. They didn't want the dump truck parked overnight. So, they had to define the commercial vehicle. And what the, the planning commission did at that time is what you can see. It says, "Commercial vehicle means any vehicle, whether motor-driven or towed, including but not limited to everything I just said, built or equipped in connection with the operation of commerce, trade, industry, or business. The following vehicles will be excluded from the definition. Passenger automobiles, including vans, vehicle, including vans, vehicle used by government agencies for official business, and other vehicles which are or may be required to be similarly identified." So, you can look at a vehicle, go, "It's a commercial vehicle or it's not," as opposed to code enforcement having to go, "What do you do with that?" Well, if I drive a client, it's commercial. If I don't, it's really my car. And that's, that's beyond the scope of anybody's ability to manage. So, all I wanted to do was to clean up the definition. So, as a city, you look at every other city, and they've got fairly specific, some go into three-inch lettering on the side of vehicles. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of requirements. But I just think our definition is so lacking that we need to change it. And, and then coincidentally, like I said, this, this commission passed this unanimously, actually after a lot of discussion, and it just never got voted on. It never was voted on one way or the other by the city council.
Well, if I'm, if I'm reading this right, Bob, if you'll remember several years ago, you say excluded from this definition of passenger, passenger automobiles, including vans, and then comma, vehicles used by government agencies. You remember several years ago, we had that real bad situation with taxi cabs on 135th Street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, if you're excluding passenger automobiles, that includes a, that includes a taxi cab.
I'm not, I'm not completely hung up on this definition because I think that vehicles, I mean, there should be some language, and Jennifer, you're the pro from Dover at this, uh, that vehicles that are clearly labeled and identified as commercial vehicles should not be excluded.
Should not be excluded?
Pardon?
Should not be excluded.
Should not be excluded from the commercial vehicle, exception of Mike's point of taxi cab.
I, 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 I'm, I'm totally confused on that. What, what was happening on 135th Street? People that lived in Adventur were parking their cabs on 135th Street and then getting picked up and going. And the poor people down 135th Street, what the heck is this? A yellow cab center? They, they should be excluded. They, they should be. I mean, now, if I, if I live in, I, I'm my own resident, and I'm a, I own a cab, and I want to drive my cab into my, my home, fine, that's one thing. But for them to go out and just park it on the public right-of-way because they can't park it in Adventur, that, that's wrong.
Right, and that's-
Or tow trucks. The other thing, I see some plumbing trucks. When I walk through San Souci, I see a guy parking a plumbing truck over there on, uh, North Bay Shore Drive, like 122nd Street. He doesn't live in the area. He's parking his truck there. I mean, that, that's, that's not right. And we, we, I, we should be addressing that.
So, then you get into non-residential parking versus residential parking.
And we should be getting it in.
Which is not defined, correct?
Well, this is, this is why, this is, we, we have a commercial vehicle definition. What Mr. Pichon is, is offering is something that you all had discussed in 2015 that actually tightens that up. Taxi cabs would fall under the operation of commerce. Um, and to your question, they cannot be parked. They're not supposed to be parking on the right-of-way. Um, nobody is supposed to be parking on the right-of-way, whether you are a commercial or a, um, red, a, a, a non-commercial vehicle. Um, and, uh, so, this, I think, would cover the taxi cabs. This would cover somebody who is, but if a, a Lyft driver, when it, as long as he, he doesn't have his Lyft in his, and it's, it's, it's parked at his house, it's now a passenger automobile. Um, but as long as he isn't, and, but when he's operating and he's got his Lyft, then he becomes a commercial vehicle. So, I think that to Commissioner Pichon's point, that is also the same thing that real estate agents have. They are, they have a vehicle, passenger vehicle. They take people around, um, to, to see cars. So, I mean, to see houses. So, perhaps a exemption for them would be appropriate.
That's, you know, like, I'll, I'll see a tractor trailer parked in a residential area, two-and-a-half-ton truck. I, I believe there's something in, right now, in the county code on that, that you can't park. I remember we still, when I was in the PD, we used to write tickets on.
Our city, the LDRs, uh, were, were amended earlier this year-
Twenty seventeen.
To, it's prohibited parking.
Yeah.
And currently, what is prohibited in residential neighborhoods from parking overnight is any truck over one-and-a-half tons.
One-and-a-half ton.
Which is small by kind of 2018 standards. I mean, I don't know if that's the right, I, I, I don't think that's correct just based on the number of muscle cars that guys are driving around and, I mean, that, a guy's got a Ford F-250, and he's not using it for his business. He's just a-
Yeah, I mean, I-
You know, he's one of those guys. And I don't know if you got to tell him he's got to leave.
Yeah, I, I, I understand.
But an F-250 that's marked with Bob's Towing Service on the side of it-
You don't want that.
Probably doesn't need to be there.
Well, you know, the, when I'm, we get at all those discussions last time around, I, I, I look at ahead to the possible time that maybe in my, my dilapidated old age, I might actually want to go out and buy a pickup truck. Now, I, I'm not planning to run a business, but I've oftentimes thought that pickup truck might be a, a very functional vehicle to have. And I wouldn't want to have the city coming along and poking the nose into my front yard and saying, "Well, that's a truck. You can't put a truck in your front yard."
But currently, that's the ordinance.
You know?
It's, that, that's my point. Currently, the ordinance exists.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm, I mean, the conversation we had, my concern really is, we've got, I mean, code enforcement, we could all sit here and talk for hours about what we think of the effectiveness or the job that code enforcement's doing. But if, if it's illegal to park a truck over one-and-a-half tons, which there, there's plenty of out there, and guys park them every day, and somebody cites me for putting my trash out a day early, it seems to be selective code enforcement.
Yeah. Bob, is this something that you'd wish us to entertain a motion to ask staff to include?
Well, I'm trying to add the, the definition of commercial vehicles to our, I mean, since we're talking about, I wasn't trying to attack the larger subject right now of what could be parked. I was trying to just stick with the definitions.
Okay.
And I, I think our definition of-
Mr. Chairman?
Commercial vehicle-
Mr. Chairman?
Needs to be repaired.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we ask staff to include this particular definition. No?
No, that's okay.
No? Well, go ahead, go ahead, Gary.
I do have a, I, the city attorney has a-
Okay.
So, with that in mind, we do have a definition for commercial vehicle, but if you look through the LDRs, we don't do anything with that definition. So, we're hung up on this definition, but there, as Mr. Commissioner Patron, um, just pointed out, we don't restrict parking of commercial vehicles. Our code looks to the tonnage weight of a vehicle, but we don't have a restriction on parking of commercial vehicles. So, if you're directing staff to come back with a definition or to revise the definition of commercial vehicles, perhaps you should also, um, ask us to tie that to some sort of restriction or direction in the LDRs.
So, I've asked, I've spoken to city council about the fact that there was, this, this was part of it. And I've got unredacted ordinance for anybody that actually wants to see it. But I've got, this, this ordinance was passed 5-0 by this commission and brought to the city council, and it, it did in fact have a reason for commercial vehicles to be defined because it was prohibiting them from parking in residential neighborhoods overnight, which was why that definition needed to be included.
Mr. Chairman, through you two, uh, Jennifer?
Mm-hmm.
So, the, the motion would be asking staff to incorporate this in connection with, um, this particular ordinance, in connection with, uh, the language that currently exists in the LDRs? Something of that sort?
Mr. Hill?
Can I, I, I don't know how much review staff has done. This is the first I've seen of it. There's a county, Miami-Dade County ordinance or definition that's almost identical that excludes station wagons instead of vans. And I'm not sure why vans are selected without further clarity on it. I mean, I, I've, I've got some additional language that says unclear, unless clearly identified or signed as a commercial vehicle, something like that. I, I would prefer you ask staff to review it and bring it back-
Yes, that's great.
-to the next meeting in November.
May, may I ask, may I ask a question here, please?
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion in lieu of a request to staff-
Okay.
That they, um, that they research this.
Yeah, all right. Ken, go ahead.
Yeah, Bob, let me, let me, I'm a little fuzzy. If I, I walk in the morning, and I'll see a tow truck parked in somebody's yard. I don't want to look at that. That's wrong. That's not supposed to be-
And neither do the naves.
Yeah. I mean, so, you know what I'm saying? That, that should be illegal. And I think it is illegal if I'm mistaken. I don't think you can park your, you, you can't park your tow truck in an R1, R2, or R2 or whatever. Am I correct on that?
Right now-
It's a truck over, huh, 1.5 tons.
Yes.
So, that's no.
Yeah, it's a no.
But so is the F-250 pickup truck.
So, see, there, there's, therein lies, therein lies the challenge.
I mean, that's wrong. We, we got to go through this. Let's go, you know?
I think the city attorney would like, the W. City Chairman would like to speak.
So, it would be my recommendation that your motion should include direction to city staff to bring back as a separate ordinance, the revision to your definition, but as well as restrictions attached to your definition.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Because right now, you have a definition for commercial vehicles, but you're doing absolutely nothing with it in your LDRs. And I think that it's a valid discussion to be had about how we want to restrict it, where we might want to restrict it, residential versus commercial areas.
And I, I move, I, I move to, uh-
We have a motion of that effect then, from Mike. And I, I'm seconded by, by Jason. I will just tell you that I don't have anything wrong with a Ford F-250. I would, I would love to have, have a nice, big, bright red one in my driveway, you know?
That's, I, I, I agree with you, and that's, but that's why I'm saying that, that's, that's wrong as well. So, what's, what's, what's being considered here is the original work, which said, "What do you want to allow to park in residential neighborhoods?" Ford F-250 is probably fine. The, the pickup truck, I mean, the, the tow truck's probably not fine.
Right.
And so, how do you define one, how do you distinguish one from the other? And right now, we don't.
That's why we're-
Which is the definition.
I think there are ordinance.
So, we've got a motion and a second to send it back to staff for further review. And staff agrees to do that. And so, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. But let's try and get this resolved by next month.
Okay.
All right. At this point, we're done with definitions. Let's open this up to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to these items, of course, is invited to step forward. Traditionally, you have two minutes, and please keep your comments to the definitions ordinance. All right. State your name and address for the record, sir.
I'm Hector Medina, 1270 Northeast, 124th Street. These are observations. I wasn't able to find the farmer markets, uh, specific regulations and the, the way to fini, what, as an observation, as somebody who has worked, they had of, of epidemiologists and who have worked in their work countries all over this world, where farmer markets are the way things are distributed. Watching for, whenever there is an epidemic, the first place we look is the farmer markets because, uh, unless they're very, they're trained, you know, they had to be, as food handlers, they had to know, they had to have bathrooms available with soap and a place where to wash their hands. And those things, I wasn't able to check if they're included, but they need to be addressed. In our zoning map, the classification of, uh, industrial zone, there is, is only one classification, industrial. So, where, how we're going to know which area is in heavy or which area is light? So, right now, it's just industrial.
That's just in the M1 district. It can be either one.
Right now, all the, all the industrial classifications of the city is, is industrial. They don't classify them as light or heavy. So, if it's industrial, it can be heavy, or it can be light, or it can be medium, whatever. That has to be specified, so we, we can address those issues.
Okay. All right. Next speaker. State your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name's Marisol Medina, 1270 Northeast, 124th Street. I also had the same concern about that description of what? Because, you know, I live right next to one, so I would really like if it was light, right?
What? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
One, one? I'm sorry?
I live right next to, uh, M1.
M1, right.
M1, yeah, on, um, between 13th Place and, I'm sorry, 12th Place and 13th Avenue, off of 124th, yeah. Um, Farmer's Market. I was excited. I mean, Miami Shores has one, and they're very diverse. But when you put only food in that environment, it's a lot of competition for them. And a lot of them go home with a lot of the produce that they came in with. So, I hope that with that, we can bring a very diversified platter of different kinds of food items that can be appealing, um, like smoothies, maybe prep food or something like that. Um, I actually thought we were going to talk about those ordinances again. I didn't know that they were going to be just, uh, approved and moved forward. So, is that how that normally goes? That we go and we revise it all, and then, and the next meeting, you just approve it?
Well, this is, here, we make recommendations. City council has to do with the approving.
Yeah.
We, we, we conduct a public hearing. We look at, for example, tonight, it's all definitions. We talk it over. Doesn't mean when it gets to city council, they're going to pay any attention to us. But we, nonetheless, we have these discussions. Sometimes they go out, they get quite lengthy. And in the case of this ordinance that Mr. Pichon brought up, it may get totally ignored. So, so we do our part, and then it moves on for a, a vote for the city council.
Okay. Um, and then there's also reference to that, it's a repair shop right now, a mechanical repair shop, um, off of 123rd and 14th Avenue. That's his little cross-section. He's registered as, or has zoned his, um, R6, which would mean he's only restricted, well, I guess he's grandfathered in, right, to that current-
Right. It's a non-conforming use now. And, and someday, that business will go out of business and cannot be replaced.
Oh, he would be happy if it could go residential, I'm sure.
So, you know, just, just so you-
I'm not sure.
We do have a lot of non-conforming uses because population changes, development changes. You don't put somebody out of business, but you can't allow the business to be perpetuated.
Yeah, like, if it was to rebuild, it would not be able to be the same.
Right.
Have to be residential. Okay. Well, thank you, guys.
All right. Very nice. Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. All right. So, now we send this to the city council. We have some interesting issues to deal with in parking and trucks. I happen to like the idea of the F-250s. They're very attractive. I, I certainly wouldn't want to be outlawed on buying an F-250 just because it weighs a little more than my Honda CR-V.
And that was not my intention.
And so, I, I think, you know, that's, we have to take a look at, maybe we have to increase the allowable weight.
We did from one, but that was a problem. We did from one ton to one-and-a-half tons.
Right. So, let's, let's get a, a motion to approve based on our recommendations tonight.
Motion approved?
All right. Jason James moves to approve. Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. This moves forward to city council, and good luck. And, and let's take a look at the truck issue. I, I like the bigger trucks. I don't object to them, you know? You can do a lot of things with, with bigger trucks and stuff. We're, we're a nation of people that have stuff. And stuff has to get moved. Yeah. Yes, Mike?
Um, I, I would like to first of all, always thank staff and guys. I really appreciate, uh, sitting down.
I'm sorry. As I say, staff always does a great job, but I appreciate being able to sit down before the meeting and go over with Debbie, um, the package, so that, you know, so, sort of like a preamble to the meeting. So, I appreciate that, that offer. And secondly, I'd like to again wish our chairman a happy birthday. And, um, it was a great party, and, uh, congratulations on being night of the year and, and, uh, all the other good stuff.
You know, 67 is not a bad age, you know? I, I rather like it. I think it's, it's, I'll never get any younger, so I need to enjoy it. So, I thank you for that. Staff, concerning our next meeting, we're looking at Tuesday, November the 6th. Now, is that in conflict with any, any civic thing like elections or anything that we have to be concerned with?
That's election night.
You see? So, if it is election night, we're not going to be able to meet on the 6th.
Is that election night?
So, that means you're going to need to find a special meeting in November, which is going to be difficult, given we have Thanksgiving, and you need to consider that. So, as things are going forward, you, you want to be aware that, uh, finding a special meeting in November could be very difficult.
Ahead of time, too.
That is in fact election night.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry?
Yes.
It is. Okay.
So, we, we, we ought to put that out right now on the record. And if, if there's, if there's nothing we have to have in November, we're probably better off just ruling it to December or even January.
Well, there was something that we were proposing to bring forward to you, that we need to have it in November. So, we will definitely, uh, just stay on track. Because once this, we miss one, then there's a ripple effect.
Yes, we're well aware.
So, we will definitely do that. We will get with you, sir.
So, we anticipate another survey on a special meeting night somewhere.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Everybody be advised.
Mr. Chairman, are we ever going to have the, uh, I've been asking for this for over a year, the-
Yes.
CRA director, where we can talk about the transportation overlay?
Yes.
That, that, those people, the public works director, the, uh, economic development specialist, where we can all get on the same page. We're like four concentric circles here, and we're-
CRA, public works, economic development. Was there anybody else we wanted as a special?
Yeah, the CRA director and the-
Right, CRA, I got that.
With, with the, uh, transportation overlay.
And you want, that's on the transportation overlay.
Economic development specialist?
CRA director in regards to that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we should be all talking about, you know?
All right. Uh, Marlene, for, as secretary, if you would draft appropriate memorandums to the city manager that the planning commission is requesting, that we have the CRA director present at some point to discuss the transportation overlay, we get a sense of where we're going from their perspective. Uh, CRA is really the tail that wags the dog now in the city. So, we, we want to know what's, what's in the offing that they're looking at.
You know, me, me-
None of that comes to us.
You know, she could give you a kind of an overview of what to develop in downtown and so forth and so on.
Yeah, there's other issues that CRA is doing. We'd like to get a report on what those things are.
And he wants a development director and the transportation overlay, too.
Right. Well, that's, the, the economic development director is separate. The transportation overlay, that would be covered probably through the CRA, I would think.
No, that's John, um, he's, we have a transportation department.
Oh, we do have a transportation department.
I'm talking about the railroad, the, with the consultant. Yeah, and we had that consultant.
Kenny's issue is the railroad, uh-
Yeah, the train station.
Yeah, the train station.
I, I, I don't think that's the John O'Brien. I want to, I want to see, uh, the consultant come in here and tell us what we're looking at and where we're going and what we want to build and so forth and so on. Meat and potatoes.
Okay. So, Marlene, you understand what we're really trying to get to here?
No, dude, sir.
And then, uh, the economic development director should have an opportunity to come to us and give us a report on, on things that he's doing and what he's working on.
You know, are we recruiting businesses? What are we looking for? What kind of businesses, so forth and so on? Are we recruiting businesses? What are we looking for? What kind of businesses, so forth and so on? Get, you know?
As, as the CRA becomes the economic engine for redevelopment of the city, it's, it's more important than ever that they come before us once a year and tell us what's in the offing. Because oftentimes, we're blindsided by things that happen because, of course, it no longer comes before planning commission. And we would like to know what the big picture is.
Yeah, you're talking about parking garages. You're talking about, you know.
There's a lot of good things.
And we should be all on the same page.
It'd be nice to get us up to speed on that. After all, we, we also represent the city, and we live in all the different neighborhoods of the city. And it's kind of useful to have this information to pass on. So, if you would prepare the, the particular memorandums, if necessary, I'll come up from downtown to sign them individually as invitations or requests to have these people come before us at a time that would be convenient within the next four months.
That, that's, you know, like, the water department, I like to find out, what are we doing with that, you know, what, what is to come online?
Yeah, we can, we can address these specialties.
And I, I get some probative questions I want to ask them.
Sure. We can, we can get these worked out, uh, item by item as we go along. All right, if there's anything else that we have to contend with, Marlene, you're, you're satisfied with that? All right, you have the, the necessary notes to request that through the city manager? And, uh, if we're set with that, then the chair will call for motion to adjourn if we even need one.
So, moved.
So, move, second. Aye, all in favor? Thank you, one and all. It's been great fun. Mr. Medina, and thank you both for coming.